So Mayor, Council, we have a couple items tonight for your workshop consideration. We have Mr. John Polster with Innovative Transportation Solutions here. He's going to walk you through I-35, a little bit of background and history and where the project came from and where we are today as Phase 1 splitting into Phase 2 and those types of things. So that's where we're going to kick off. Then we'll follow after with the Property Enhancement Program with Drew Christ and talk to you a little bit about that, and Claire's going to add a little bit with that as well. So we'll start out with John. John, if you're ready, please proceed.
Okay. My name is John Polster with Innovative Transportation Solutions. For y'all who've heard that name before, I've been working with City Louisville for quite a good time, and a lot of that time has been spent on the I-35E project. So I'll just start using the fingernail to back up. So we had an original plan, and we'll go over that. This was originally going to be a project that was always meant from 635 to 380, and there was some concern that if we segmented the project going south and north, that we'd never ever get to the north project. So we looked at the total cost of the project. It was a little over 28 miles. It's anticipated to be about $5 billion. It was $4 billion back in 2013, 2012, when we cleared the cost bill up, so we're moving that up to $5 billion. Scamatic approval for all of those segments occurred in 2009. We had environmentally cleared the middle and southern section in 2011 and the northern section in early '12. So, you know, what am I talking about? Well, from basically 380 to somewhere around the north of the lake, the northern segment is that portion. The middle is the segment that you are familiar with with most of Louisville. And then the southern portion is from about 30, 40, south into 635. And so the original cross-sections were, you had three general-purpose lanes, you had one man's lane in each direction, and you had... Okay, now I gotta back up. Oh, yeah, that's... Well, I'm not getting this thing. I hit myself a lot. In all these scenarios, you had whatever frontage road you had that were sometimes discontinuous along the corridor in all three segments. So in the most major part of Louisville, you had just basically six lanes of traffic, and you didn't hit your man's lane, I mean, your HOB lane until 30, 40. But what's proposed in the future, in all cases on the outside of frontage roads, they're not listed in the numbers, but on the outside of frontage roads, we're going to have what's called 2-3 frontage roads, which means that between the exit ramp, where you hit the frontage road, and the entrance ramp before you go back on the highway, there'll be three lanes of traffic on the frontage road. We are converting 35 to what's called an X-ramp configuration, which means you exit just past a street, and then you run the frontage road up to the cross-street that you want. If you're somewhere in that area and you're getting on the frontage road to go on the freeway, you'll go up the frontage road, and just before you hit the cross-street, you'll have an on-ramp. So in between the exit ramp and on-ramp along the length of the frontage road where you're developing the curbs, you'll have three lanes of frontage roads in between the ramps. That's in all cases. So in the southern section, we have what's called a 4224, with four general-purpose lanes, two southbound man's lanes and two northbound man's lanes running 24 hours a day, running concurrent with four general-purpose lanes going north. Since 420 feet of right-of-way usual, but it went down to somewhere as close to 500 feet when you get to some of the major interchange reconstructions. In the middle section through the Louisville area, again, it'll be 4224 with the 3-2 frontage roads. And then when you get north of the lake, you have what's called a 3113 to a 4224. So through most of the balance, from the lake up to the split where 35W comes in, you'll have six lanes of general purpose and one man's lane in each direction. Originally, we had to drop it down to one man's lane in this corridor because when we come around the corner, we picked up all the traffic from 35W in their man's lanes, and so we had to do a lane balance. So they'll drop from 2 to 1, and then we come and drop from 2 to 1. And then once we make that split from basically the 35E, 35W up to 380, it goes back to this typical 4224. If you don't stop me if you've got any questions. I prattle until otherwise. So there's a $5 billion project. Why do we split it up? The Dallas District has seven counties in it. They're annual budget for new capacity improvements, outstanding propositions, whatever. It's about half a billion dollars. It would have taken us 10 years to collect that dollars. If that's only if we could have everybody in the Dallas District area for the next 10 years to give us all of their money. We didn't think that was going to be possible, so we had to come up with what we call a phase approach. Remember, I was saying that... I'll get to that in a second. So the Senate 1420 Committee is a committee that the legislature created because there was a backlash against design-build and CDAs because of some issues in the past that are not germane to this conversation. But we had to have a committee. It was Louisville was on it, Denton was on it, Denny County, the NPO, TechStop. There was a group of people that basically had money in the game to have stake in the game, so they had a ability to determine what type of facilities would be and what type of tool we'd use. We come to, we came on a design-build approach. Design-build is different than what you saw in the LBJ Express and the North Ten Express. Those were concessions. Those are owned by Citra, and they're on the revenue stream. They built the road, they get the revenue stream. A design-build firm project basically says, there'll be a revenue stream, but we're not going to use it to build the road. We're going to pay as we go, and then the region will own that revenue generated from those man's lanes. And so they decided to do a design-build approach, and we would also incorporate the man's lanes in the initial phase. And then we were going to have to, at the time, our cost estimate, we had about a billion dollars earmarked initially, and our initial impact cost for right-of-way for the total $5 billion job was a billion dollars. So we could go out and buy all the right-of-way and not do anything, or we could come up with another alternative to a phrase-based approach. So what was the phasing? Very first thing off was, we decided we weren't going to phase it from south to north, building it sections at a time. We were going to build less cross-sections in the full corridor. So we had a request for qualifications that went out for a design-build firm. AGL was selected most qualified, and they essentially began, you know, construction in 2013.
John, if I'll jump in here. So you remember, Council, at this time and well before, 407 interchange was a separate project. They started it, and it was behind schedule six or eight years to begin with to start.
Right.
They started it, and then they stopped it because this was coming on and this was evolving. So to the public, it made it even worse as far as the timeframe because they saw 407 interchange start and some of the service.
There was a lot of bad blood in the Louisville area because it looked like we just took 35E, broke it, and left it set there for nine years or whatever. But the reality was, is we soon found out that we were going to go to a X-ramp configuration. And the other evolving of engineering practices is when you have a facility that goes from Mexico to Canada, you have a long time to chase out your grades, right? So it's typically better for development if the interstate goes over the cross-streets. Typically, the interstate says, we're the big guys, we're the feds, you want to cross us, you go over us, we're staying agreed. New paradigm. Whenever possible, they take the interstate over the cross-streets. And so we noticed that there was about a five-foot bust, and what we were going to do is an interim job for 407, and this was moving on a lot faster. And we tried to get the contractor that was out there tearing up 35, I mean, at the time, to give us a good price on that five-foot lift. And it was order of magnitude 10 outside of what we thought was acceptable, so we had to just terminate them and wait for this project. And so that was a long, arduous wait. Okay, so where, how did we get here? Initially, the county put in $57 million in its '04 bond package for this project. We ultimately ended up leveraging that to about $74 million with the COG and the NPO for some air quality funds. We added an additional $478 million in regional toll revenue funding, if you're not familiar with that term. Denton County spent all the '90s developing SH-121 as a free facility, and we got it under construction. And 15 minutes after we got it under construction, the TechStop came in and said, hey, do we have a deal for you? And so we went through the process of tolling 121 in an argument that the county, what I call the five civ cities, we had a state new reconstruction bank loan that got us engineering to do 121, that made it where it was viable as a toll road. So we said, okay, we'll toll it, but we want near neighbor, near timeframe projects because we don't want to have to toll everything else in our region. So that agreement included the five cities. Louisville being the major of the five cities that carried $10 million worth of weight to help us on that project, they had like a little, just under $5 million of that $10 million. So we generated a regional toll revenue program that netted the region about $3.2 billion in money from the North Texas Tollway Authority. Of that $3.2 billion, $1.6 billion was allocated to Denton County as a formula, but we ended up with the largest share of the revenue, and we allocated $478 million in regional toll revenue funding. Now, we did this prior to knowing that the cost estimate was going to be $5 billion. And then we went out and opened up a call for projects, for projects like Corporate and Valorage Boulevard, and so they accessed those RTR funds as well, and those were already gone to us. Otherwise, we probably would have put more RTR money into this project if we'd known better. State funds made up the balance, except that we got to a point where the collector-distributor, that thing between Bush and 121, all of a sudden, those bridge structures, those weren't included in the original document. So what Denton County argued was, is they needed to put the document out to AGL, the RQ, with an option to bid on eight items, and AGL did bid on those eight items. And it was a combined package, so they were a little bit high on the original scope, higher than some of the other firms, but they were crazy cheap on the options because they didn't think we were going to trigger the options, right? Because it was $300 million bucks. So we got a really good deal on the options. And when we saw what the prices were, we went out and found a way to trigger them. So what we had to do was Denton County and the cities that were involved had to backstop that $285 million add to the project to get it up to the $1.4 billion, all the way up until... So they already built all this stuff, and we had to pay for it. And then we closed on our TPI loan, which is the State Innovative Financing Initiative Act of some year, that loans money to projects that have a revenue stream, and then you pay them back over time as your revenue escalates, then your payments escalate. So we closed that in November, so we got our money back, and we're trekking down the road. Early on, I will tell you, I'm exposed to a lot of communities along 35E, and Louisville was so much farther ahead of every other community along the corridor on aesthetics. You'll note that there is money from, this project let in '13, right? There was money in the LA bond package because Louisville had been working on aesthetic corridor for 35 back before we even were sure we were going to get funded. But because of that, the county was able to have come in alongside City Louisville, city put in about a little over, a little under $1,505, and we were able to do enhanced aesthetic features all the way out throughout the Louisville corridor. And what started happening is, the other community saw what was going on, and they tried to catch up, and they were already six years too late, been hitting on Facebook. So Phase 1, I didn't have an exhibit for it, but it's basically from 380 to 2181. As you know, there are no reversible man's lanes north of the lake. We did not have the right-of-way, and besides, once you get to about the corinth area, the what's called, the direction of traffic for directional man's lanes has to be predominantly in one direction. Once you get past corinth area, there's just as much traffic in the mornings going to it as there is coming out, and in the evenings, there's just as much coming in as going out. So we cut the man's lanes off just north of the lake, and it helped us from not having to buy a lot of additional right-of-way. We did new bridges at Texas Boulevard, it was North Texas Boulevard, Corrigan Parkway, and Posto, and we put three lanes in each direction. Now, I know there were some articles in the paper around here, I happened to see them or somebody sent them because I don't read the papers, about concern about the width of the lanes. In an interim phase, the issue was not to acquire any more right-of-way than necessary because it was very expensive. And so what we did was, if you drive anywhere in Dallas or anywhere that's fairly congested, you'll know that 11-foot lanes are used quite frequently. So what we decided to do in all of these corridors was take basically a size 13 foot and put it into a size 10 shoe. So we put 11-foot lanes, we backed off on some of the shoulders, and it meets all design criteria because those are, those that have 12-foot lanes, 10-foot shoulders, those are desirable parameters, but you can't meet them. So we had to go to add additional capacity in the corridor. We had to meet minimum standards. And the reason we wanted to do that, because the only other alternative was, is we went through what we just went through, right? And you got back six lanes of general-purpose lanes and two toll lanes. And it looks like we went through all that trouble just to toll people on the road. And so politically speaking, we did, and we had to give capacity, free capacity, back to the driving public in order to survive. That's why these are narrow lanes. For the section y'all are most concerned with, the most notable at, we have two reversible man's lanes through the Louisville area, an additional general-purpose lane. We got a new bridge across Lake Louisville. I understand they opened up the frontage road a couple days ago. I'm always up on the top deck, so I never see it. And then we've got your capacity to Garden Ridge and 407. Basically, 407, if you look at it from an aerial standpoint, 407 is as wide as what 35E ultimate is going to be. It's built in its ultimate configuration, so we don't ever have to go back and touch 407. Old Garden Ridge, width-wise, we have to do some lengthening on it. 407 is primarily exactly like it's going to be for Phase 2. And then we had the modified collector-distributor. What that means is, is that we're still working on the ends to make it work. Those of you that live here know that we still got some work on that because there's a lot more traffic in there than we thought. And then south of there, this is where we're going to get called stupid, because when you hear about this area right in here, we dropped down from four lanes of traffic, right, to six lanes, three lanes, four lanes in each direction, to three lanes in each direction from this area about the Dallas County line into 635. And that's because Dallas County, City of Dallas, Farmers Branch, none of the communities in Dallas County participated financially in getting this project across the goal line. So we didn't exercise any of the options that Denton County had to pay for to add capacity in Dallas County. I'm kind of wishing we had bit the bullet because it's going to be, pretty soon, we're going to be getting called stupid. We've gotten fired up. So where are we at on this schedule? Okay, so it says November 2017, and it was supposed to be August 31st, and they are buying back sometime because like they're helping us build some trail sidewalks and stuff, you know, there's some help that I think they're going to have to redo some work with Louisville on some of the aesthetics of 407. But generally speaking, they're done from August 31st to sometime in November, and it's costing them $126,000 a day every day they go past August 31st. So they're working fast and furious. So I have a video, but we're not going to look at it right now because it's 13 minutes long, and I think I've lost it. So I'm going to just tell you where we are before we get to look ahead. So basically, everything which is occurring in, I just got this today, it's last night on the bill. Everything that's happening in the Louisville area, essentially by mid-September, will be done, whether it's the pedestrian facilities along Lake Louisville that connects to y'all's facility, Garden Ridge into September, complete. The 407 northbound and southbound U-turns, those aren't open yet. They're not open because we're trying to figure out how to fix the aesthetics underneath 407. But their schedule will be done and open by September. Same with Fox Avenue. It was open early because of school, but they got to have some periodic closures to make some of the changes that they didn't get before school opened, and they just wanted to be open, and then they close it at night when there's not any school traffic. And then your frontage road pavement. If I was you, I wouldn't get out on the road after 9 o'clock. It's just not a pleasant place to be for their work at night. And the collector-distributor has a few more improvements that have to be made on either ends to get people in easier and out easier. So where are we going? This will be quick. We need additional right-of-way, a lot. We got to go back and rip everything out in the middle that we just did because you can't have a reversible man's lane offset. In other words, you can't have the columns in the middle of each lane, you have to offset them, so we just took the columns out. All that has to be ripped out, and we're going to put two man's lanes going north and two man's lanes going south. In order to do that, you got to push out the frontage roads, you push out the man's lanes, right? That's where the additional right-of-way comes in. Back into Dallas County, we'll go from the six today, general-purpose lanes and all this other stuff, so that's even a bigger hit from a right-of-way standpoint. And then this is when we initiate the 2-3 frontage roads throughout the corridor. We have two frontage roads, except for where you have the arm ramp and off ramp, and then you'll have three frontage roads. So looking at another $4 billion. So talked about the man's lanes. When we did, one of the reasons we started with a design-build instead of concession because when you go out on a concession, the road is a unknown. Nobody knows what the traffic's actually going to do. They got an opinion on what it'll do, and so what you do in a financial term is you discount the revenue stream and give it a haircut. And we took some pretty hard haircuts on 635 and North Ten Express. So we decided, we'll just let the revenue stabilize, we'll do a design-build, and we'll already have 635 operational with a life cycle. We already have North Ten Express with a life cycle, and we'll have the 35 man's lanes operating with a life cycle. So we're going to have to take a haircut. We'll know what the revenue stream is off. As a matter of fact, we're already on the silver right now on those wish bones, and those are large dollars that we added to their project. So this revenue will be leveraged to assist funding in the next phase of construction. So this isn't included in the numbers, I'm going to talk to you about in a second. So we still have about $4 billion needs to fund 35, and we're currently in the current tenure plan, and these are all subject to change, you know, every 60 days, about $361 million in Denton County, about $264 million in Dallas County. There's more money that can be brought to bear on this. For example, part of our tenure plan, the region wanted to put $50 million into the outer loop, and we told them, you can knock yourself out playing in Denton County if there ain't a chance in Tioga. Sorry to whoever this is. We're going to build that, so we're pushing to move that $50 million down to 35 because it's our priority. Dallas County's doing the same, plus we have the revenue stream that's stabilizing that we get to basically amortize at some point. Plus, this at revenue stream doesn't take into account that wish bone that we added to the LBJ job that's generating a ton of revenue, and we're just fighting over who owns it. So what does that mean? So right now, you got TechStop, you got RTC, you got Denton County and the stakeholders, all the cities on the corridor, working through the tenure plan, working through COG stuff. We just lost CDA authority, for example, in this legislative cycle. It was a really strong tool. And we had authority to go into Phase 2 as a concession. We lost that authority, so we're kind of coming back and determining what our next steps are. And I will tell you, probably this time, it will go semi-south to north because the biggest issues we're going to have is within the Louisville south corridor. And so, because I'm looking, as I live north of the lake, and just making the ramps not be married under any S-curves has made a lot of difference on that road there. So we're going to be working on this, everybody that Eric's involved, we're all in this, talking about what that next step is on taking what monies we do have. For example, the new administration has created a new program called INFRA. I used to know what it meant, but I can't remember right now. But basically, it's a, it's another one of those innovative financing tools where if you got a dollar, they got a dollar. They don't want to supplant your dollar. They say, you got a dollar, I got a dollar. And oh, by the way, if you have an innovative tool that you're using, that gets you even more credit. So we're thinking if we can get $600 million, $700 million, $900 million pulled together, we can get a 50/50 partnership with the feds and do another $2 billion job somewhere in the southern part of the Phase 2 of 35E. So that's...
One thing, John, if you would, a major thing here, John's company and his affiliation with COG and others tried to push for the Lake Bridge project. Lake Bridge is now, of course, the southbound lanes are ultimate, and the northbound is the old bridge. For years, that was a bottleneck, and now, since the traffic has been swapped, you have eight lanes, four and four. When Phase 2 kicks off, they will take the northbound bridge and shut it down. You will go from eight lanes to six for several years, correct?
Life of the country.
So that's going to be not a good thing to the public when that happens. So John tried to lead a movement, since it had environmental clearance, to go ahead and fund the Lake Bridge now as a separate contract, and it would have made sense. And at the time, they would have been still, it would have been still six lanes, and the bottleneck never would have moved. You wouldn't move them over. People are free-flowing now, and it's split, but it's, there's not a bottleneck. So he would have left them there, started construction. Unfortunately, that did not get legs, it didn't get done, but that will be a major issue for the city and the corridor 10 years from now, 12, 8, whenever that kicks off is the Lake Bridge.
Because the folks who said, we can find a way to construct a boat around that, don't let it in the area. So I do have a video. I'm encouraging you to either look at it here or to look at it on YouTube. It basically does an aerial fly-through, and it shows you what all of these things look like once they're done, which, I mean, helicopter, I guess you can do that too, but this is cheaper.
What do we look like on time for the, what ask we have that you're going to give, Eric?
Mayor, would you just about, Claire?
Fifteen minutes.
Fifteen minutes on the PEP.
Can you wait?
This is 12 and a half minutes.
Can you wait around?
I can do whatever you need.
Once you wait around, we'll go get that done, and we'll come back here after we go through the adjustment.
Sir.
We'll make it quick, I hope.
Yeah, yeah. Quick, let's go. It's up there, Claire. See it right there in the center. There you go.
So Council, coming on the tail end of learning about I-35, talking about huge amounts of dollars that affect a large number of people in our region, but we're going to transition now to our property enhancement program, which deals with a relatively small amount of money but affects one person at a time in a great way. So I'm going to introduce, I know a lot of you know Drew Christ. He's just been promoted to an administrative analyst with the city, which basically makes him a glorified extreme researcher for all of us. Drew got promoted to that position because of his work on the PEP program. He pretty much single-handedly drafted all of the terms with help of our legal department, and when I met with him, he was proposing some new changes in the upcoming fiscal year. We went through those changes, and he's going to go over those with you guys today. But what was even more cool, which I wanted to kind of show you guys today, was he's been collecting statistics along the way, which unbeknownst to me, and it's really given a great view about who it's affecting in our community, where some of our weak points are, and it helps, is helping us further define the program next year. So we're going to go through that, and I'll hand the presentation to Drew.
Thank you so much. This is my first opportunity to address the Council, and so I'm very honored, very excited. The property enhancement program named by our wonderful Assistant City Manager, Claire, and I have nothing but good news to share from residents who've gone through the program. So approved by City Council in July of 2016, we're now just 13 months past our first application that we approved. The goals of the program are to promote the thriving neighborhoods identified in the Louisville 2025 plan. Essentially, it's to, our director was to create a program that gives homeowners a handout, not a handout. In addition, we wanted to improve neighborhood aesthetics in some of our aging neighborhoods, increase the taxable value of our residences, and improve the safety of residential structures. And at the very bottom, it's hard to read, encourage homeownership in Louisville. We want neighbors to stick around. We want neighbors to stay and love where they live. And just as a reminder, in the 2025 plan, our thriving neighborhoods are identified in yellow. So funding for the PEP program, originally before I was brought on to the city, Council approved $165,000 for property enhancement grants in 2016 and '17, $85,000 to put in and propose for FR17, '18 is $8,500. In 2016 and 17, $85,000 was put in and proposed for FR 17 and 18 is $8,516. Not billion, not billion. So what is the property enhancement program? What did we design? It's a reimbursal, partially matching grant for homeowners to help with exterior repairs to their homes. So this is not cosmetic in nature. It's necessary repairs, things that would lead to further degradation or health and safety violations, things of that nature. So examples to that would include replacement of damaged fencing, roof repairs, window replacement, door replacement. All of these have effects on the fire safety of the building, the overall energy efficiency, the aesthetics of the neighborhood. Specifically, the program also addresses retaining walls. That's a special item in our grant application, as a lot of the retaining walls in Louisville, when built by developers, were put on private property. They are not the city, in city right-of-way. So we will, with all our match 50% handup, so we're partnering with them to make the necessary repairs. And we will provide a grant, a maximum match of $5,000 for low to moderate income homeowners. But what does that mean? That's a question I have every homeowner needs to know. Am I low to moderate income? Please tell me I am. According, HUD puts out this very good chart every year determining what households qualify for federal assistance. And that's the chart we've decided to go with. So for example, if you have a household of four, if your adjusted, or your gross income, not adjusted gross, was below $57,350, by HUD's definition, you are under the 80% median family income for the area. So it's calculated by Dallas County, Denton County, our whole metro statistical area. That means that a homeowner who earns $51,000 or $57,000 would have to spend $10,000 to get that $5,000 match, just to put it in perspective. However, we assist all homeowners in Louisville, no matter their income. The grant amount is just reduced to a maximum of $1,000. So if you earn above this chart, you can still qualify for a grant, we'll still partner with you. Our assistance stops at a certain number. There's one caveat, and I mentioned it earlier, it's for those retaining walls. I don't know if anyone's replaced a retaining wall. It's not easy and it's not cheap, but it means a lot to the structural stability of the neighborhood and including our public infrastructure, like sidewalks and sidewalks and streets. So no matter the household income, we will do up to $3,000 match for retaining wall So how many projects have we completed in the 12 months? So far, 46 have completed construction. 51 projects have been approved. So right now, we have just over five projects that are in construction. Homeowners have invested over $315,000 in these projects, while we've matched $112,000 just over. That return on investment is $2.82. If you remember the design of the program, we were supposed to match 50%. Our homeowners aren't letting us do that. They're spending way above what we are. They're putting in almost $3 for every dollar we match. So they, they're taking this gift and running with it. Really, I think the most important point of this number is that homeowners aren't saying, oh, good, I've saved 50%. They're saying, oh, wow, now I can do something better because the city's come alongside. I can do something that will last longer. Case in point, this retaining wall is along Valley View. You've probably driven by it. It's hard to tell from the photo, you cannot stand on that sidewalk. The wall had bulged out, the osmotic pressure had pushed the wood away. It's now rotting, the fence is lean. This homeowner was able to not only replace the retaining wall with something that's 100-year fix, the fence is new as well and much stronger. Minimum grant awarded, we have done no grant lower than $675. That was a garage door that would not open. Homeowner was very happy to get that. We're not getting small projects. We're getting homeowners doing big, meaningful repairs. And the average grant awarded is about $2,800. So we're seeing significant sum outs of investment from homeowners. What kind of project types are we doing? Homeowners can combine projects. So if we have a low to moderate income household, they can replace their fence and put up gutters. So the numbers are not quite even. However, you can see the most popular project, fencing. Our code enforcement teams do a great job of identifying fencing that needs to be replaced or repaired. We have really good hailstorms, really good windstorms, and homeowners insurance doesn't like to help homeowners replace their fences. So we hear a lot from those homeowners who have pools, have dogs, the city ordinance requires that fence, and we partner with them to get something much stronger that will last them a lot longer. As a runner-up, window replacements, siding repairs, retaining walls, gutters, they're all sort of sloping at the bottom. Where are we doing projects? Everywhere. I'm so excited. One of my big concerns about the beginning of the program is that one HOA would find out about it and tell every single resident, go apply right now, we're all getting new siding. And that didn't happen. If anything, we have a really organic spread. You can see there are light shaded backgrounds. Those are actually our zip codes, so 057, 067, 077. It is almost a perfect even split between north and south at Main Street. We're really seeing a lot of word of mouth. We're seeing homeowners interested from all levels, in different neighborhoods, of different income backgrounds, I mean, and all over the city. We have a few of our homeowners here in Old Town. You can see the major divide is between east and west. However, the majority of our single-family residences are west of 35. So it's natural the majority of them would be on that side of the city. So how well are we addressing households with greater needs? One of the design and in the rules of the program, maybe prioritize households that are lowest income, households with disabled homeowners, households that are senior citizens, so 62 or older, and households that are within our target reinvestment neighborhoods. These are designated by community development block. So we actually have four neighborhoods that we have done targeted marketing in. It is very interesting to see the distribution relatively to our population. The numbers match. Low to moderate income homeowners, to have 45% of our grant recipients apply who qualifies low to moderate income is very encouraging. It means we're helping the households with the greatest need financially. Disabled homeowners at 8%. These are homeowners who are doing accessibility repairs. They're replacing their driveway, they're doing the zero level entry, they're doing wheelchair ramps. I can, it shocked me if 8% of our homeowners in Louisville are actually legally disabled. So it seems we have a very high proportion of the disabled homeowners taking advantage to make those necessary repairs to make their house more livable. 62 and older, I think a third of our, almost 40% of our community being over 62 is very healthy representation of our homeowners. And lastly, these target reinvestment neighborhoods, collectively, we have about 530 households in those neighborhoods. Our targeted marketing consisted of neighborhood meetings and door hangers, and for some reason or another, those neighborhoods have not responded in the way that we had hoped. They're pretty consistent with the rest of Louisville. It seems as though perhaps many of those homeowners may not have the 50% match to make those necessary repairs. Or maybe they, I see very often homeowners think, oh, I don't qualify. They don't read the rules and they don't realize that we can assist them to make those necessary repairs. There's only so much I can do to convey that information that everyone should apply. So monthly trends, how much have we spent and how much per month? And by spent, I mean how much have we given out in our grant awards? It's extremely cyclical. Construction is cyclical. The winter is very slow. I want to point out, in January, everyone's got their holiday bills to pay. They got to pay their holiday credit cards. But back in December and November and October, everybody was getting ready for family to come by and they wanted their house to look real nice for when their in-laws came and critiqued everything. So, and so one point I have on here, I will likely see applications rise as fall approaches. I should have not put that in there because when I arrived back, I've been on training this past weekend, I had 15 phone calls today about the property enhancement program. As people come to the fall, homeowner, or home repairs come to mind, it's not 105 outside. The hail season is now coming to an end and it's just on everyone's mind. We're also in a unique market, skilled laborers in short supply, and so construction prices have risen very quickly. And a lot of homeowners are shocked when they find out that labor is double what the materials actually cost for most of their repairs. And so we also had a wetter-than-usual summer. I know no one would believe me after last week, but the rain really stops a lot of construction projects. You can't do flat work or leave your home open to the elements whenever you have severe flooding and flash flooding. So I expect to see this come back up as we move along. So what's our impact? I know you've seen some of these photos, so you know, feel free to stop. I'm going to just give you some information, so about some of the homeowners behind, behind the photos and some of their experiences. This is a homeowner who had been collecting materials to patch and make small repairs as she could. Literally had a little Kressman drill that she would plug in and fix the thickets when she could. She was able to turn around and purchase this beautiful custom fence that's a magnificent part of the neighborhood that really cleaned up a lot of the debris. This homeowner is very special. I know it's hard to tell from this photo, but there's severe rot and damage to this siding. This is original to this home. This homeowner's been here for 31 years in Louisville. When that siding was pulled off, there was nothing underneath. There was no house wrap, there was no insulation, there was nothing. And so not only is there brand-new siding here, but now, I just got an email from her last week, her electricity bill dropped 70% because she was able to go back with house wrap and insulation underneath that brand-new siding. Just absolutely impressive. And the neighbors are shocked because now they know they have no insulation likely underneath their home. So they're, they're asking me about their grant process as well. This homeowner was denied a claim from their homeowners insurance because the damage to their roof was only 25% of the total roof. And so they would not be able to replace it. This homeowner was able to not just patch and take free tards and nail them to the roof, but actually get the roof repaired permanently over this bedroom. This homeowner built his fence himself. This is amazing. Absolutely incredible work. I'm sure many of you have seen this. This is on North Mill as you drive up towards Lake Park. He mirrored his neighbor across the street, and so now what happens is the neighborhood looks like it's one contiguous HOA, when in fact it's just two neighbors who were really handy and really good at woodworking. Absolutely loved that project. This homeowner, I know it's hard to tell, these bedroom windows, they were nailed shut. None of them could open. She had three children. It was a severe fire hazard. In order, if she didn't nail them shut, the windows would fall out of their casings. So not only was she able to provide a fire safety exit for those, for children, for the rest of her family, but she was also able to get roof repairs, trim done, new paint. The house looks brand-new. It's the prettiest house on the block. This homeowner, and this photo drives me crazy, but I don't have a better one. There's a very large crack and it is not a zero entry into the home. Because of their disability, they really needed a level entry at their threshold to get in. They were able to replace the driveway and replace the damaged solar screens on the exterior of the home. Every single driveway in this neighborhood has the exact same failure point. It was just a flaw in design by the contractor. And so now every single neighbor in that neighborhood is calling me asking, what about my driveway? How do I get it? This homeowner painted their house. It is striking. All of the houses in the neighborhood were the exact same tan, and I promise you won't miss this house when you drive by. It is absolutely beautiful. This is one of my projects that's closest to me. This homeowner was being charged by her homeowners insurance for having this swimming pool that was non-functional. In addition, this homeowner was being cited, or warned rather, for having an inoperable pool. This pool did not have a drain, so she had to use a sun pump every year to get the water out, but you can only take so much. The rain would come and fill it up. This is a mosquito hazard. We spend a plentiful amount of resources to address the mosquito issue. We were able to match her removal of the swimming pool. And I would add, this concrete was recycled and I'm sure we drive over it now when we go on 35 every day. So now, this is, this wasn't just a simple demolition, punch a hole and backfill. This was a full removal. So in the future, this land is usable and reclaimable. She's already begun planning her garden for next year. She is just absolutely excited and is saving hundreds of dollars a year on her homeowners' insurance for not having this swimming pool. And who knows how many mosquitoes we've removed from a two-square-mile area of this property? Thousands? Tens of thousands? So I have an anonymous survey. Don't worry, we send them their grant before I send them the survey. So they, it's honest, or pardon me, after. So just some quotes from residents who give this anonymous input. And I asked them in addition for what changes would they'd like to see? And I promise you, the changes are always, I would have really liked more money. And can you do my kitchen next? And they're very honest about it. I have to tell them, no, unfortunately, we won't be remodeling their kitchen. We do have a 40% response rate on our surveys, which is shocking for surveys. Most people don't, don't want to. They really are not reimbursing anymore. So some other results that I wanted to show. Have you told your neighbors? Word of mouth is extremely powerful. It's a part of a thriving neighborhood. It's a part of community outreach to your neighbors. 100% of people are telling, saying yes. I'm telling everyone, come look at my, come look at this repair, it's great. Overall opinion, we're doing great. When I get about 30 people to say, I love something, wow, that's amazing. I'm shocked to see that. And most importantly, would you have purchased these repairs without the grant? 85% of our homeowners have said no, or I would have had to wait to save up the money, or I would have had to borrow money in order to do this. I would have delayed that construction. So we are 85% above these repairs we've made happen earlier, and we've made a major impact on the community now. I think that's pretty powerful. So plan revisions for 2017, 2018. One of my biggest complaints is homeowners say the application is too long. They would like to see it streamlined. Completely understood, that's one of our main goals. We would like to design an electronic submission. Some of the younger applicants and homeowners really don't want to fill out a paper application and have waste the paper. And I'm all about saving the trees and the ink. I'd like to add additional projects. Some repetitive requests come up with homeowners saying, you know what, I have this patio and this pergola, and it was a DIY project from a previous owner, and I'm just waiting to hear the crash in the vacuum. Would y'all be willing to help me pay for the demolition of that? So that's something we'd like to look into, especially if it was unpermitted. We'd like to make sure it's removed and that the homeowner's educated on the proper process. Tree removal. I'm sure none of us have gotten a phone call about, my tree fell, can the city come and take it from my front yard? This is a very expensive project for homeowners that homeowners insurance rarely covers. And so, but not just removal, also replacement with a new tree. That way, we preserve our urban canopy, especially in our neighborhoods to continue thriving. Doesn't make sense to have, to only have trees that are all 30 years old. We need to continue adding and rejuvenating our urban canopy. We need to clarify requirements because not all projects are equal in scope. Painting your house is a lot simpler than replacing a retaining wall. And many homeowners are just not educated on projects. They need a lot of assistance in knowing what to ask contractors and what to look for. And we need to add additional requirements on specific projects. So fencing, metal posts and wood posts are almost the exact same price. A metal post will last much longer if it's sunk deeper. And so we would like to make sure that we're purchasing, helping homeowners purchase the best improvements and the best repairs that will last longer. If we can help a homeowner replace a broken window, I would much prefer that it's an Energy Star rated or efficient window. Again, if you can help a homeowner save money on their utility bills, why not help them do that and make that long-term repair? And then adding additional specifications for retaining walls to make sure we're having homeowners purchase 100-year walls instead of 20-year walls. I want to make sure that we're giving homeowners something that isn't going to be a pile of rubble 30 years from now and not have to go back and replace. That's all I have. Any questions?
You have any questions?
What are the target neighborhoods that you're pitching out to?
So the target neighborhoods are, three of them are in east of 35. McKinsey-Hembry, you know, McKinsey-Hembry is one, if, and I apologize if you don't have a map of it, but I can mark it out on my slide. One of them is called College Street. Another is called, and of course, I'm blanking on the names of this one. Lakeland Terrace, number two, which is one of the original neighborhoods west of 35. You have College Street, McKinsey-Hembry, and then, I cannot think of the fourth name. You'll have to forgive me, it's just in this general area of Purnell.
Purnell High School by Central Elementary?
Yes, sir. And I can most definitely have a map of that for that area. There is a map on our GIS page for the city of those four target neighborhoods. They are determined by household income and the age of the property, as well as other factors from the U.S. Census.
Thank you. Thank you. You ready to move on?
Yes, sir, if you want. Go through the agenda or you want to wait till the video?
We'll do the, we'll do real quickly on the, go through the agenda, and then we'll, John, be ready here in about 10 minutes or less. Don't worry. Okay. We'll start with the invocation by Councilman Troyer, plus two flags by Councilman Jones. Jones, Presentation by Nancy Davis. Then we're to first public hearing. Any questions? Okay, public hearing number two. Derek, if you have anything, just jump in.
Well, if you don't mind, Mayor, real quick, and I'm talking very quickly, Richard, can you, can you explain on the public hearing number one about the Walter Street property swap from city property and what we're doing there with the brownstones?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. This zoning change before you tonight is the first step of a very exciting project that's about to take place behind City Hall here on Walter Street. 19 brownstones will ultimately be built along West Walters and North Mill. As far as current conditions, the existing parking lot is zoned public use district. And then, the vacant property just to the west is zoned OTMU2. So, this zoning change request will change the zoning of the city parking lot to OTMU2. That will pave the way for the townhome project to move forward. Next slide. But before I go any further, I do want to point out, there was an error on the staff report. It identified 93 existing spaces in the city parking lot. There are actually 88. So, once the project is completely done, the total number of parking spaces that will be public will be 81. So, that's a difference of seven instead of 12. This illustration kind of shows the different phases. This is the current property owned by the developer and that is zone OTMU2. And of course, this is where the first phase, here in the pink, will be the first five townhomes. But really, the first thing that will be built is the new parking lot at the back. That will happen before the five townhomes are built facing Walter Street. Once Phase 1 is complete, then Phase 2 will occur, and that is what's shown in blue. Now, once both phases are done and all of the plating takes place and creates the new lotlines, then the ultimate parking lot, which will cover the yellow and white areas, will be planted as one lot and then rezoned back to public use. And with that, I'd be glad to, if you could go one more slide. There was a timeline presented in your packet. I did add some approximate actual times as far as the site development work. That'll start here in just a couple of weeks in early September. That'll be completed in mid-October. And as you'll see here, that does include the paving of the parking lot in that yellow area on the previous map. And then, as soon as that is done, we'll move into the vertical construction of the Phase 1, the five townhomes on Walters. That will begin in mid-October and is expected to be completed in early March. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
So, they're in a fast south village.
Well, we're going to be watching this very closely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 2. Item 3. Then we're down to the consent agenda, item 4.
Yes, Mayor, I've asked, I would like to ask to pull this item so Chief Tittle can give a presentation on this particular purpose.
Item 6. Item 7.
Counsel, I'll tell you in your backup, you'll have a map that shows what was Phase 1. David has a drawing there. I believe it's green and yellow. This is basically Keely and Jones, and we will reapply for the grant for, I'm going to call it the Lila Entry or the Park Entry Road all the way down to the floodgates at a later date due to the dam repairs.
I thought it was going to be demolished. Thought the dam's going to be demolished. It was falling apart. Item 8. Temporary sales office. Item 9.
This is the ordinance as following up to the public hearing earlier in your agenda.
This makes it much easier on you all in the future. This just basically makes it where every time they change their times and dates, you don't have to redo. So, this is a nice, you know.
I do have a question about the cost of replacing all the signs and, David, can you clear that up for me? Their signs are going to be just overlaid.
Item 11. Item 12. And that's it. John, if you're ready, even though we're starting, you've got 15 minutes.
That fourth neighborhood is in the shadows.
Yeah, it's got audio, so I just get to watch it. And it takes a second to start. It kind of tricks you. But it is playing now, so you can turn it up.
Handheld control may turn up. Pretty good. That's it.
There are bongs on the back.
You might have to, you might have to add live, John. You're good at that. Here we go.
... A new Dickerson Parkway, new direct connector ramps at the interchange of Interstate 35E and the Sam Rayburn Tollway, new southbound bridge over Lewisville Lake, and fully reconstructed interchanges at Beltline Road, FM 407, Garden Ridge Boulevard, Oak, Lake Dallas Drive, Turberville Hundley Road, Corinth Parkway, Post Oak Drive, and North Texas Boulevard. This animated rendition will take you through the project design and operation. Studies by Texas A&amp;M University's Texas Transportation Institute consistently show that North Texas commuters spend a growing amount of time in traffic. This time results in increased commute costs and environmental impacts. Projects like 35 Express are being designed and constructed to help alleviate the daily congestion resulting from commuters going back and forth to employment centers. This project adds much-needed capacity, increases mobility, and improves roadway deficiencies. Traffic counts, congestion modeling, and anticipated future growth in the region have been evaluated by the project team to determine the most effective configuration of the facility. The reversible management system is a congestion management tool that will replace the current HOV lane system. Revenue generated from the 35 Express managed lanes will go towards funding future improvements to the I-35E corridor. The 35 Express managed lane system will extend approximately 18 miles down the center of the interstate from I-635 in Dallas County to Turberville, Hundley Road in Denton County. This addition to the roadway will flow southbound to the Dallas area and job and activity centers during morning rush hour. In the afternoon, the lanes will be closed for a short period to allow for the reversal of lanes towards the north, allowing motorists to proceed in an express manner towards home, daycare, or sporting events. A cooperative partnership between transportation agencies, including the Texas Department of Transportation and the Regional Transportation Council, made up of elected officials from the Dallas-Fort Worth region, determine and oversee the managed lane policy. Managed lanes provide drivers a choice for a higher level of service and use a peak-perioded pricing approach to deliver a speed of 50 miles per hour, which means the price is anticipated to be higher during rush hour and lower when traffic is lighter. The system is automated and uses movable gates protected by barriers to prevent opposing traffic from entering the lanes. Motorists can enter and exit the 35 Express managed lane system at several locations. The northbound entrances into the managed lane system are Royal Lane, I-635, Beltline Road, Frankfurt Road, Corporate Drive, FM 1171, Main Street. The northbound exits from the managed lane system are Valwood Parkway, Crosby Road and Beltline Road, Dickerson Parkway and President George Bush Turnpike, Corporate Drive, FM 407, Justin Road, FM 2181, Swisher Road, Corinth Parkway. The southbound entrances into the managed lane system are Corinth Parkway, Turberville, Hundley Road, Garden Ridge Boulevard, Corporate Drive, Frankfurt Road, Beltline Road, Valley View Lane. The southbound exits from the managed lane system are FM 1171, Main Street, Corporate Drive, Sam Rayburn Tollway and Frankfurt Road, Sandy Lake, Whitlock Lane, Valley View Lane and I-635, Royal Lane. A key element of this project is providing a direct connection between the 35 Express managed lane system with the I-635 Tech Express managed lane system. Direct connector ramps will be added to allow motorists to travel southbound 35 Express managed lanes to eastbound I-635 Tech Express managed lanes, westbound I-635 Tech Express managed lanes to northbound 35 Express managed lanes, southbound 35 Express managed lanes to southbound I-635 Tech Express managed lanes, northbound I-635 Tech Express managed lanes to northbound 35 Express managed lanes. One of the key intersections of this project is the Beltline Road interchange in Carrollton. This intersection is one of the busiest along the corridor and sees more than 24,000 vehicles each day. In order to alleviate traffic congestion and improve railroad crossing safety in this area, Beltline Road will be elevated to the current height of I-35E, and I-35E will be raised approximately 25 feet above its current height. In addition to raising the interstate and the roadway, the frontage roads will also be elevated. Communities along the project corridor worked collaboratively with AGL Constructors and TechDOT to determine aesthetic improvements that reflect their unique characteristics. The retaining walls of the Beltline Road interchange will include aesthetic improvements that reflect the history of the city of Carrollton. The project will also add a new east-west connection by extending Dickerson Parkway to the west. The new intersection will cross over I-35E and connect to the north and southbound 35E frontage roads, as well as the northbound frontage road of the President George Bush Turnpike. The new bridge will have two lanes of traffic in each direction, sidewalks on both sides, and will connect commuters to the Dart Trinity Mill Station. This station serves as the transfer point between Dart Rail and the DCTA A-Train. Another feature in this area is the construction of a collector-distributor roadway that will improve mobility of traffic flow between the President George Bush Turnpike and the Sam Rayburn Tollway. Additional lanes of this parallel roadway provide room for vehicles to maneuver to various ramps without mixing with the I-35E general-purpose traffic. Collector-distributor traffic is also kept separate from the frontage road traffic. The separation improves safety and mobility on each roadway. The interchange of I-35E and the Sam Rayburn Tollway sits near a very active retail area that often backs up due to the current configuration of the interchange. Connectivity on the north side of the interchange is another feature of this $1.4 billion construction project designed to increase mobility in the corridor's hotspots. Direct connector ramps will be added to provide access from southbound I-35E to east and westbound Sam Rayburn Tollway, from east and westbound Sam Rayburn Tollway to northbound I-35E. FM 407, known locally as Justin Road, is an important east-west connection along the interstate. The bridge serves as a gateway to Lewisville and Highland Village and will include aesthetic treatments to highlight this key access point. After construction is completed, a widened FM 407 will run under I-35E. This highly anticipated reconstruction will include three lanes of traffic in each direction and sidewalks and Texas U-turn lanes on both sides. The Garden Ridge Boulevard Bridge is also being fully reconstructed to include three traffic lanes in each direction. A significant upgrade to this intersection will include the ability for bicyclists and pedestrians to safely and easily cross I-35E to access the DCTA station. Additionally, new connections to the Lewisville Lake Park systems on both the north and south sides of the lake, as well as a new trail in Coppers Branch Park East, will enhance recreational opportunities in the area. Future trail projects will provide a connection north to the existing Denton Branch Rail Trail in the cities of Corinth and Denton. I-35 across Lewisville Lake is being expanded from six to 14 lanes. This expansion includes a shared path for pedestrians and bicyclists on each side, two-lane frontage roads in each direction, four general-purpose lanes in each direction, and two reversible managed lanes. The existing bridge will carry northbound general-purpose and frontage road traffic and a shared-use pedestrian path. The new bridge will carry southbound general-purpose, frontage road, and reversible managed lane traffic and a shared-use pedestrian path. The retaining walls along the bridge will also feature textures and images to improve the aesthetics of the area. The communities of Hickory Creek and Lake Dallas, featuring vibrant business districts, small-town atmospheres, and recreational assets, will benefit tremendously from the reconfiguration and full reconstruction of the existing Lake Dallas Drive and the North Denton Drive bridges. The existing Lake Dallas Drive Bridge will be removed and replaced with a new Oak-Lake Dallas Drive interchange. This new interchange will run underneath I-35E and connect with the north and southbound frontage roads. It will have four lanes, as well as sidewalks, and Texas U-turns on both sides. The existing North Denton Bridge will be removed and replaced with a new Turberville-Hundley Road interchange. Turberville-Hundley Road will run underneath I-35E and connect to the north and southbound frontage roads via jug handles. It will have four lanes and sidewalks on both sides. Corinth Parkway is another highly anticipated improvement. Serving as the main entrance to the city of Corinth, a growing community with a hometown atmosphere, the current facility will be reconstructed under I-35E and expanded from a two-lane bridge to an eight-lane roadway, sidewalks and Texas U-turns on both sides. Corinth plans to develop the area near this intersection to serve its growing residential base. Easing congestion from increased residential development to the west and the east, the Post Oak Drive Bridge in Corinth is another long-awaited improvement that is being reconstructed as part of the project. This bridge will be expanded from a two-lane bridge to an eight-lane bridge with sidewalks on both sides. North Texas Boulevard, located at the gateway of the University of North Texas, is also being reconstructed to handle the increasing traffic near one of the state's largest universities. In its final configuration, the new bridge will have two through lanes in each direction, two dedicated turn lanes in each direction, U-turns on both sides of the bridge, and wider sidewalks. This bridge will connect the newly constructed dormitories on the west side of the campus with the academic buildings on the east side of the interstate. The 35 Express project will add greater mobility to one of the fastest-growing areas in the country. It will provide access to economic centers and promote additional growth along the corridor. For more information on the 35 Express project in Denton and Dallas Counties, please contact the 35 Express Public Information Office.
Thank you, Janet.
It was much more pleasant. You're right. Go listen to the screen.
I wouldn't know half it, so.
I like the cars that throw over each other.
We convene the regular session of the Lewisville City Council. First item of business will be the invocation by Councilman Troyer, followed by the Pledge to the American Texas Flags by Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Jones.
Will you stand and join me in a moment of silence?
Please join me in the Pledge to the Flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. indivisible.
The first item on the agenda is presentation. Presentation of Employment Outcome Award by Project Search for the first year of Project Search 2015 through 2016. Mayor, I believe Dale Delauter with Project Search is here to present the presentation.
Can you get to your name and address for the record, please?
Okay, my name is Dale Delauter, and my address is 1416 San Bernard Court in Flower Mound.
Okay.
Okay, and we are here. I'm here with some of the class of...
You can pull the microphone towards you there.
Okay, I'm here with some of the class of 2015-16 Project Search Program, and we would like to present our outcome award to Nancy Davis, our liaison with the city. We're just very thankful for all the support. Gabby, you want to say a couple words?
They asked me to say a couple words, but what I really have is one word, and that word for you is validity. Our validity of our program was brought into question. Rather or not, this program could properly win. It was our first year. Rather or not, we would all get jobs. That was a big one. And rather or not, they wanted us back the next year. Luckily, all these questions, to answer to all these questions was yes, yes, and yes. All of us got 100% employment. We were the guinea pigs, so it could have gone either way. Let's be honest, but thanks to Nancy's advocacy and the advocacy of the city for saying, yes, we want these people doing our task and learning job skills. I am now employed at the PD, along with Spencer, and Taylor is now employed at Parks, and that's just one of the many jobs that this employment has helped us get. But without Nancy, none of it would be possible. And with that, we present this award to you.
And we did have 100% employment for our first year, so we're real proud of that fact, and we just thank everyone for the support, for the support of the city, and for the departments in the city that supported us, and for Nancy. Thank you.
Consideration of an ordinance amending a zone change from public use district to Old Town Mixed Use Two District on .867 acres located on the northwest corner of North Mill Street and West Walter Street. The area is a public parking lot. A land swap will relocate this parking lot behind a proposed town home development. P&amp;Z recommended approval by a vote of seven to zero. The recommendation is that the city council approve the proposed ordinance as set forth in the caption. Richard Ludke, our planning director, is available to address any questions.
Okay. And we don't have one to speak on this. Have a motion to close?
Make a motion to close public hearing.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Is there any discussion? Counselor.
This is an ordinance of the Lewisville City Council amending the zoning ordinance by rezoning .867 acres legally described as Lot 1, Block A of the Lewisville City 1 Edition, located on the northwest corner of North Mill Street and West Walter Street. From public use district zoning to Old Town Mixed Use Two District zoning, correcting the official zoning map, preserving all other portions of the zoning ordinance, determining that the public interest and general welfare demand the zoning change and amendment therein made, providing for repealer severability and a penalty, and declaring an emergency.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Public hearing two. Consideration of an ordinance amending the Lewisville City Code Section 17-25 Heavy Industrial District Regulations. In the proposed ordinance, 67 uses will no longer be allowed by right in an HI district, but instead be allowed only with approval of an SGP. The recommendation is that the city council approve the proposed ordinance as set forth in the caption. Planning Director Richard Ludke is available to address any questions.
Okay. Does anybody wish to speak on this? Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? Counselor.
This is an ordinance of the Lewisville City Council amending Chapter 17 zoning of the Lewisville City Code by amending Section 17-25 Heavy Industrial District Regulations to clarify allowable uses, providing for repealer severability, a penalty, and an effective date, and declaring an emergency.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Public hearing number three. Consideration of the amended and restated service and assessment plan and assessment role for Lewisville Castle Hills Public Improvement District Number Six. This is a public hearing regarding the plan and assessment role which have been created to identify public improvements to be provided by PID 6, along with related information concerning the cost and indebtedness to be incurred. The recommendation is that the city council hold the public hearing.
No speakers? Okay. We don't have any speakers. Do we have a motion to close?
Move to close.
Motions, there's a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Move to approve is presented.
Second.
There's no vote? Okay. He was just having a hearing.
We have an item later. Do it then. Thanks.
Visitor-citizen forum. At this time, any person with business before the council not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the council. No formal action can be taken on these items at this meeting. I have no speaker cards on this one. Consent agenda. All of the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. Mayor, I've received no cards.
You do have, Chris pulled in?
Yes, I have a request to pull item four so that Chief Tittle can give us a presentation on this.
Okay, let's go ahead and go and vote on the rest of the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda, with the exception of item four.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and there's no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item four.
Approval of a bid award to Sea Legs US Corp Bristol, Rhode Island for the purchase of an amphibious watercraft in the amount of $133,660. A total of eight bid invitations were downloaded by bid sync.com. Two bids were received and opened July 13, 2017. This boat will be equipped with an all-wheel-drive wheels allowing the boat to be driven off its trailer, across rough terrain, and into the water permitting the boat to launch into areas without boat ramps. Funding is available in the fire department fiscal year 2016-2017 operating budget. The recommendation is that the city council approve the bid award as set forth in the caption.
Get it up here. Mayor, council, thanks for the opportunity to come up and just explain a little bit about this Sea Legs amphibious watercraft that we're going to be purchasing and after your decision tonight, and how it's going to enhance our abilities with our dive team and our water rescue responsibilities for what we do on, not only our lake, but for our regional response capabilities and anticipated increase in canoeing and kayaking traffic on the Trinity River. Currently, we have two 25-foot Boston Whaler boats that are installs out at Eagle Point Marina, and we use those for all of our incidents on Lake Lewisville. But when the lake is up, which we've had the last two years in 15 and 16, and the water's high enough where we can't get under the 35 bridge, we have no access to the west side of the lake if we were to have any incidents over there. And currently, right now, there are no boat ramps over there either, so even if we could quickly remove one of the boats we currently have on the lake, onto a trailer, and pull it around there, we have no way to launch that boat. And I don't anticipate Coppers Branch being open for another year, so with that being said, this boat's going to give us the ability, if we have another flooding event, to actually access the west side of the lake by just pulling the boat. It'll be, it'll be kept on a trailer. It's a smaller boat than the current boats we have. It'll be kept on a trailer and ready to go at any time with our dive team, and we can pull it around to the west side of the lake, drive it off the trailer. As you saw in the caption, it's an all-wheel-drive boat. Drive it off the trailer, drive it into the lake. Once it becomes where it's floating on the water, you raise the wheels up, you fire up the 115-horse motor that we're going to have on it, and we'll be able to do exactly what we do in our bigger boats on the west side of the lake. This boat will come equipped with a side scan sonar, just like our other two boats, so we'll be able to look for victims safely, locate those victims, be able to drop marker buoys and put our divers down in a much more safer and controlled environment than having to go out and do sweeping patterns in an environment that not only you can't see, but you don't know what you're going to get into on the bottom of the lake, whether it's trot lines or dump debris, places where fishermen have dumped brush and stuff to, you know, set up a good fishing spot or whatever. So, these types of dives are much safer for our divers. They're a lot less physically taxing, and we can just get down, get the victim, and get back up and back into a safer environment. This boat's also going to be able to be pulled with our dive team when they go for regional response. As all you know, our dive team is a regional response dive team. Our dive equipment was all bought with regional grant money, so we are apt to be called to go on dives in waterways in any of our neighboring, not only our neighboring communities, but our neighboring counties. We'll be able to take this boat with us. Not all the people that call us for responses have boat capabilities or side scan sonar capabilities, so we're taking our tools with us with this boat, and we'll be able to, again, drive it off the trailer and into any waterway we need to encounter. And then, with the addition of the 2025 plan and the plans to actually build launches and exits on the Trinity River and try to get a lot more people out there and join the Trinity River in canoes and kayaks, we have to anticipate a need for our services out there as well, and so this boat's going to give us that ability to get out on the river if we're ever called for service out there due to a medical emergency or just somebody turning over and their boat getting away from them, and they have no way out, they don't know where they are, they're in an area where they don't know which way to go to get out. We'll be able to get to them in a much safer manner, drive the boat off into the river and get to them. If we encounter any low areas, we just engage the wheels, drive through the low areas, get back in deeper water, and just keep on going. So, we're really excited about the addition of this boat to our fleet. We're looking forward to getting it here in the spring and training before next year's lake season and getting it ready to go, and also the anticipation of the activity on the river. So, with that, I'll answer any questions you have.
You?
I don't have any questions. Just, I appreciate how much thought has gone into looking at the what could happen that maybe haven't happened yet, but better to be prepared than to realize afterwards that we didn't really have the right tools to address the problem. So, I'm very excited, I hope, for your sake and for the sake of everyone that uses the lake and the river, this item passes tonight, and I appreciate your presenting it.
Well, and as always, we hope we never have to use it other than training, but we want to be prepared if we do, so thank you for the opportunity to speak.
All right, thank you.
You have your motion?
Move to approve item four.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Julie?
Agenda item eight. Consideration of a variance to the Lewisville City Code Section 4-28 regarding a temporary sales and marketing trailer at 100 Crizm Law Drive. Pulte Homes is developing a 75-unit, single-family detached residential project and is requesting a variance to place a temporary sales and marketing trailer on this site for the purpose of pre-sales before the model home is completed. The recommendation is that the city council approve the variance as set forth in the caption, not to exceed 12 months or until the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, whichever occurs first. We have Director of Neighborhood and Inspection Services Wayne Snell available for any questions.
Okay. TJ?
Mayor, move to approve.
Okay. We have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mayor, can I just clarify that's with the stipulation?
Yes, with the stipulation.
Got that? Okay. Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you.
Agenda item nine. Consideration of an ordinance accepting and approving an amended and restated service and assessment plan and assessment role for authorized improvements for the Lewisville Castle Hills Public Improvement District Number Six. This plan defines the annual indebtedness and the projected cost of the improvements to be provided by a PID in the manner of assessing the property in the PID for the costs of the improvements. The recommendation is that the city council consider and approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption.
Councilman Jones?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay. Counselor?
This is an ordinance of the city of Lewisville accepting and approving an amended and restated service and assessment plan and assessment role for authorized improvements for the Lewisville Castle Hills Public Improvement District Number Six, making a finding of special benefit to certain property in the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the city, levying special assessments against certain property within the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the city, and establishing a lien on such property, providing for payment of the assessment in accordance with Chapter 372 Texas Local Government Code as amended, providing for the method of assessment and the payment of the assessments, providing penalties and interest on delinquent assessments, providing repealer severability and an effective date and declaring an emergency.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Agenda item number 10. Consideration of an ordinance amending the Lewisville City Code Section 15-36 Maximum Speed Limits Near Schools. In the proposed ordinance, school speed zones will be replaced with language making it an offense to operate vehicles at a speed greater than the posted speed limit. In addition, two locations are being deleted entirely as they are no longer active school zones. The Transportation Board recommended approval by a vote of seven to zero. The recommendation is that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption. City Engineer David Solomon is present to address any questions.
Okay. Does anyone have a motion?
Make a motion to approve? Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Any discussion? Counselor?
This is an ordinance of the Lewisville City Council amending Chapter 15 Traffic and Vehicles Section 15-36 Maximum Speed Limit Near Schools, providing for repealer severability and a penalty and an effective date and declaring an emergency.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Agenda item number 11. Consideration of a resolution declaring stormwater drainage to be a public utility, calling for public hearings to adopt the ordinance and to establish the schedule of charges, setting a date for public hearings, authorizing publication of notice, and enacting other provisions related thereto. The resolution will establish the two public hearings for October 2, 2017, one public hearing for the ordinance establishing the structure of the stormwater drainage utility, and additional public hearing for the ordinance to establish the schedule of charges. The recommendation is that the city council approve the resolution as set forth in the caption.
Okay.
I move adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Agenda item number 12. Consideration of a resolution approving the fiscal year 2018 financial plan of the Denko 911 District. Pursuant to Section 772.309 of the Texas Health and Safety Code, Denko Area 911 is required to provide a draft of its annual financial plan to all participating jurisdictions soliciting comments. The District Board of Managers at their regular meeting on September 7, 2017, will consider any responses on the draft budget and final approval of the 2018 financial plan. The recommendation is that the city council consider the resolution as set forth in the caption.
Anyone have a motion?
Move to approve.
Move to approve is presented.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
We're down to reports, Mayor.
Okay. You have the third quarter investment report from April 1, 17, to June 30, 17, in your back-up. Not Nika?
Nothing, Mayor.
Okay.
Mayor, council members, park fans, just a reminder that coming up on Saturday, September 9, we've got our doggy dive-in at the Sun Valley Aquatic Center. All dogs will be $4. Humans will be free that day. We ask that all humans be accompanied by a dog. We'll have a contest and prizes, so we invite everybody to come join us.
Okay. Thank you. Janet?
Yes, sir, Mayor. Come this time next week, we'll have been through the first day of school for LISD. So, just a reminder to everybody to watch for those school zones as they'll be activated in the morning and afternoon, and we will be enforced. So, we want everybody to be safe this year and take some extra time when going to school.
Yes, thank you.
Mayor, the lake level just continues to have it right around the conservation. We are just about the conservation.
Okay, thank you. Jane?
I just wanted to mention that the public hearings for the budget for 1718 were set at the Budget Workshop last week, and those are set for September 5 in the morning at 7:30, and then we have an evening public hearing on September 11 at our council meeting.
Okay, thank you. And thanks for all the work you did on the budget.
Yes, sir, I wanted to do a brag of staff this weekend for Clear the Shelter. We were able to adopt out 78 animals. Three were remaining, which is better than previous years. It was pretty amazing, emotional, exhausting, but staff did an amazing job.
Okay. How many animals did you take to your house?
I almost took one. I literally, I can't have a dog, another dog in my house, but I was like, if this one doesn't get adopted, I'm taking it home, but luckily someone took it.
The ordinance allows six.
Yes, sir.
Nothing, Mayor.
Okay.
Nothing, Mayor.
Brian? TJ?
Mayor, some folks may know that September is Ruin TJ's Favorite Things Month. Apparently, I will be in a dunk booth for the LHS band fundraiser on September 2. So, dig deep and come check out the cool cars, check out what's going on with our marching band, but more importantly, spend some money to put me in a bucket of water.
See what I can do.
All right. Appreciate it, Mayor.
Sure. Everything?
Yes, sir. Just like to invite the public to attend our grand opening of the Louisville Visitor Information Center, 247 West Main, Thursday, September 7. James, that's three to six. Is that right? Really neat place. We're excited about that, so we invite everybody to come to visit that facility. Also, our second Small Area Plan Public Meeting is set for Thursday, August 31, I believe, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at LHS Harmon Campus, so everybody's invited to that. That's basically the area from Round Grove Road to the north, Oak Bend to the east, Business 121 to the south, and Duncan Lane to the west. Is that right, Claire? Okay.
Just had one thing. The council was invited last Thursday, I believe, to the heyday at Louisville High If anything came as a result of that, it's that they're all excited. The band is in full force, it appears, and they're plenty loud. So, it was fun, and the council got a little workout out of it.
Neil?
Thank you, Mayor. I have several things for the MCL Grand. First of all, coming up on the 26th, the last and specially added Texas Tunes 2017 concert will present Walt Wilkins and the Mr. Carrows, and also Susan Gibson, who is perennial favorite here at the MCL Grand, and that'll be, I think, a very exciting and well-attended concert. So, I would suggest, if you have any interest in going, that you get your tickets quickly. Marco Musica is a comedy show with the topic "Save Us From the Chat Group of WhatsApp, Amen," and that'll be on September the 8. I love that title. Louisville Lake Symphony kicks off its concert season this year with Kyung Oh, a violinist and very cute girl, so, but phenomenal musician. She'll be playing Prokofiev's Second Violin Concerto, very difficult piece, but more importantly, really exciting piece of music, and it's going to be a great concert. There'll also be Mendelssohn and Mozart on that concert, so it's going to be a good evening, and that is September 15. Public events, Louie LaRoe Shopping Event on August 27. Keep Louisville Beautiful Gardening Secrets Class continues with composting on September 7. Yoga in the Plaza is now taking place every Wednesday through October, and acoustic jam, I always mention, every Friday, presented by the Visual Arts League, and some phenomenal artists in music and a pretty good crowd. Art exhibits, we have Fresh Ideas, which is an annual event that Visual Arts League does, and it will be in the main gallery through September 9. And then, in the north corridor, we have Make a Statement, and that's also through September 9. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob?
Nothing, Mayor.
Okay. Counselor?
Assistant Secretary. Officers, thank you for your service to the community. Okay. We're down to going into a closed session. What do we have in there? Both items?
We have real estate and economic development.
Both? Okay. Closed session in accordance with Texas Government Code, Subchapter D, 1, Section 551.072, Real Estate, Property Acquisition, and 2, Section 551.087, Economic Development, Deliberation Regarding Economic Development Negotiations. We'll now go into closed session. We'll reconvene. Is there any action to be taken?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion, a second to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries. We are adjourned.